I'd like to call to order the July 24, 2023, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Could you please take the roll?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Commissioner Betcher.
Here.
Commissioner Harrison.
Here.
Commissioner Landis.
Here.
Commissioner Stenson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And Commissioner Morgan asked to be excused.
All right. Does anybody like to make a motion for an excused absence for Commissioner Morgan?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Morgan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none that motion carries, Commissioner Morgan has an excused absence for tonight. All right. Item number three on the agenda, approval of the June 26, 2023, meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those minutes? I am not hearing or seeing anything, so I'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Does anybody have any public comment for something that is not on tonight's agenda?
Oh, so yes, we have Dan Peterson. You'll have five minutes to present at the podium for public comment.
Working, okay. First, thank you for having and giving me an opportunity to speak before you. My name is Dan Peterson. I'm a resident in Breyer. I'm here to speak about the permit process that will be somehow at some point by your review, that Terrace, uh, Mount Lake Terrace High School is expanding the softball field and the soccer fields and renovating them and adding lighting and new surfaces. And as, as a resident next to the school and a former school principal, I totally support school athletics. That's not the problem that we wanted to bring up. We understand that you're going, looking at some of the different permitting processes for clearing and grading and landscaping and civil permit and fence permit and electrical permit and construction permits. So I don't know which my comments, which ones would apply to which kind of permit, but I'm not sure how much control you actually have because I've written to the school district and they've written back that there's their SEPA process is such that there's really not much review that's possible. So, however, here's my, here's my, I have two concerns, and one is about the lighting. And I don't know if you have any kinds of abilities to help guide the district in its final approval for lighting. In 2006, there was a major expansion of the baseball fields and the lighting was almost, the height of the light poles was almost doubled. In the course of that renovation, at that point, the district told us that as neighbors, we had to be notified and we had to support the increase in height of the light poles. And the reason for that was that this district wanted the light poles higher because then they can aim the lights down at a steeper angle so there'd be less glare in our houses. My house is right up against the fields and so we have a number of houses that are right up against the back of the fields. And so at that point, the district was willing to negotiate with us and look at some things that would make this a better accommodation for us and as well the athletic activities. They worked with us very closely. We had multiple meetings and then when the lighting and we eventually decided in response to the benefit of having lights higher and aimed down, it actually would be for an advantage for us as well. So we supported in correspondence with the district. I'm not sure why that same process is not being followed now for the new lights because they're going to be the same height poles or very similar, which before when Terrace was meeting with us, were told that they have to have approval to go to that height. So that's one of my concerns is, is there any kind of approval process that you have for determining the height of the poles? And the reason I ask that is because the lighting is such that it was glaring into our bedrooms, literally, those bright huge lights. And so the district was really good in 2006 in working with us and literally had, they have covers for different lights, and they literally came into our bedrooms and would sit with walkie-talkies while people were cherry pickers at the top of the poles and say, "Light number three is glaring right into this house and this bedroom. Can you adjust it?" And so they, they did that accommodation for us, which is really, really helpful, other than imagine these spotlights essentially into your bedrooms and they would be on until late. So that was one of the accommodations we had before, and that's one of the things that I'd like to see now as they expand their new lighting. Can they at least sit down with us through your permitting process and say, try and accommodate neighbors' requests to reduce glare? The SEPA report, I was a shocked to read, said there will be no impact. That is not true. And so that's my, one of my other requests. A second request is that with the, our approval of the height of the lights, we ask for some accommodations, meaning how late would the fields be used? And at one point, when they were first proposing it, this is 2006, the, the fields would be used until 11 o'clock at night. That is really late. And as neighbors, usually we have noise ordinances for at least 10 o'clock to reduce noises. So at this point, the fields are basically, they start shutting down the lights at about 9:15. The games typically end at nine for baseball I'm talking about, and I'm not talking about tennis, which Andrew will probably be talking about. But we're hoping that having some kind of light restrictions, because there are a number of homes that are right up against the soccer field and softball fields as well. Let's see here. So that's kind of basically, and that relates to, the lighting obviously relates to noise.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Your five minutes.
Sorry, five minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd be glad to entertain questions or whatever later, or maybe I can submit written comments. Is that an option later?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then, it sounds like we have another speaker on this same matter?
Yep, so I have Andrew Palmer, who's going to speak. And you'll have five minutes.
Hello. My name is Andrew Palmer. I'm a resident of Breyer and my home sits right up against the Mount Lake Terrace High School. And I'm here to speak about new development for the softball fields. With all the new development, there's a couple of things that I'd like to speak about, focus on being on a lot of the, you know, sound coming across. It's definitely one that stood out with new speakers being put in place, number of the residents and myself. It's loud enough that's echoing off of homes to the point where we don't know where the sound is coming from if we're walking our streets in the middle of the day. Number of residents halfway down the street will think it's coming from across, you know, on the other side because it's echoing. And we'd like, you know, that to be kind of assessed for maybe changing the, where the speakers are, you know, positioned, if they could be turned around and focused the other way around. So it's going back at, you know, the baseball fields and as development handles for, you know, the softball fields, it's going to be even more sound going loud. Also with the tennis courts, that's one that with them being on kind of a different light schedule, being on until 10:00 PM, there's a lot of sound coming off that until 10 o'clock at night. And so number of the residents aren't very happy with, you know, how loud that can be until 10 o'clock. Some of the lights will get shut down, but that's for just the main, oh, baseball field. So as that development grows with all the contracted signouts for, you know, oh, the softball leagues and things like that, if we could have, you know, kind of some sort of setup for a better kind of either schedule or the residents being able to know when, you know, those loud noises would be coming, they could assess for it and also have, you know, a good structure for it so they could, you know, either be at home or leave when it's going to get really loud and, you know, work towards that. And then with lights, I've got lights shining into my, parts of my home and would like to see any more new lights come up, definitely be developed to where, you know, I could speak with anyone who's built, putting them up, that, you know, if there isn't, you know, if more come in, if they could get reassessed and repositioned, then it would, you know, not be more lights shining right onto, into my bedroom and, you know, have that issue. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to direct your questions to staff to respond, but real quick, I realize that both the speakers only just mentioned that they are in Breyer. Do we have their full addresses for the record or will you need, you do? Okay. All right.
All right. Thanks. And we have one more commenter?
Oh, we do?
Yes.
On this same issue?
No.
Okay.
But not when you're otherwise.
No, that's, that's fine. We'll go ahead and let staff respond to their questions and then we'll.
Oh, got you.
Hi. So staff is processing a permit for resurfacing the ballfields at the school currently is what's being proposed. That's an administrative approval process. The school district, since it's a public agency, can review their own, make a determination on their own environmental review. That's SEPA. And so they can do that. There's an opportunity for people to appeal their determination, but they, they are lead SEPA officials on the resurfacing of the ballfield. So just to give some context, in 2006, the school district came to the city for a variance for the height of the lighting and that variance was granted at that time. So the lighting is not under review as far as I'm aware right now. A variance runs with a property. So once, doesn't run with an individual, so once you grant a conditional use permit or a variance to a piece of property, it runs with the property. So I'm not aware that they're proposing any changes to that. As far as time goes for field usage, we have a noise ordinance in the city 10:00 PM. You can't use public parks or facilities after that. Therefore, public park property, it's after dusk. But for these other uses, after 10 o'clock, you can't use these facilities. So if they're using the facilities after 10:00 PM, then there is issue with violation of the noise ordinance. What I would recommend, since we're, you know, reviewing the resurfacing aspect of the fields, of where they initially proposed to replace natural fields with crumb rubber, they have since come back due to city concerns and are proposing a cork field surface, that there can be some further conversations with the district concerning the lighting and maybe it sounds like some changing of where the lighting is somehow not getting shielded properly from adjacent properties. We could talk some more to Mr. Peterson and Mr. Palmer about that as well. So that's kind of what's, what's under our review at the city right now as far as what the school district has proposed.
So the, that variance that was granted back in '06, that ends up being applied to the entire property regardless of the location of any future installations?
Um, no, it would have had to be for the installations that they got a variance for at the time.
Okay.
So I'm not aware that there's additional installations of lighting, but I can check on that to see if there is. But just making the point that once the city grants a variance for those existing poles, then that, an applicant has an opportunity to place poles or replace those poles at that height, that higher distance. But it sounds like the school district originally worked with adjacent property owners and it sounds like they did a better job of shielding that lighting from adjacent properties, which may not be the case right now.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and it, it sounds like the, so the, I know the baseball stadium or the, the field has the lighting right now, but the softball field and the soccer field, it sounds like that's where the development, that's what's being redeveloped because the baseball field already got changed over to turf. So I'm assuming that that's probably where they're going to be putting the lights, the new lights. So it's not going to be at the existing location of the baseball stadium, uh, field, but the softball field and the soccer field. So in that case, would, if that is true, would this, then the district would still have to come to the city for another variance?
Um, I would need to check on what type of approval that they received back in 2006 from the city and what, what that encompassed.
And then I know I brought up previously, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or maybe a meeting, you know, recently before that about the, the, how late at night those lights are on, even when there's no activity at the field. And it, even if it's not shining directly into everyone's windows, it does cause a lot of light pollution.
Sure.
For, for that area. Is there, it sounds like it's, it's citywide code that kind of is dictating that 10 o'clock time limit and obviously the city has its own fields that stay lit. Would the city have the ability to, you know, look, look at that ordinance again to, you know, to decide if they still want lighting to go that late at night? Because it sounds like it's not only lighting, but it's, it's a, it's a noise issue. And, and for those who aren't familiar with that area, the, the fields are on the backside, the far east side of the high school property. That's where the city limits are, to the east.
Right.
As soon as you hit the, the, the property ends and you hit Breyer, the elevation changes. So it's not, it's not a flat elevation. Everybody in Breyer is at a higher elevation, so it's probably, you know, kind of like the stadium echoing effect that's, you know, multiplying both the lighting and the, the noise issue as well. And I'll say to, you know, to the properties to the south as well.
Yeah. So the city can always amend codes pertaining to this particular code. If somebody has a complete application and vests their application with the city, then we have to review the application per the requirements in the code as they vested their application. So city could come back and say, "Hey, we don't think it's such a great idea. Noise is going on until 10:00 PM," and potentially change that. But we would still be applying the standards in place at the, in the code for this particular permit, what's in place right now. So, and I, you know, you folks know how long it takes to get a code amendment through, so it's not a, you know, overnight type of thing anyways, but it's definitely something that can be suggested to take a look at code-wise. I think maybe a better strategy right now would be to talk with the school district to see if we can have a conversation on some of the concerns with the neighbors to see if we can make some improvements there where it's not impacting the neighbors for the, the lighting and the noise and see if we can rectify that situation in some way.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about this? Follow-up?
What is the scope of the permit? You mentioned it was just resurfacing the fields?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's the resurfacing of the existing field.
Okay, so are there lighting or amplified noise impacts? Or is that being looked at in this permit?
Um, I don't know that there are changes, but I'm not that familiar with all the, the aspects of this permit. I just know that there's been conversation more with the issues as far as the surfacing, the new surfacing, as it relates to stormwater and other impacts versus some of the other concerns shared. So I'm not aware of that, but there may be other changes that they're proposing. It sounds like that maybe some of these things are existing as far as the noise and the lighting and other things that are going on.
Anyone else? Not hearing or seeing anything. I, I would just add that the, those fields were pretty much the only part of the property that weren't touched when the, the new high school was built. They, they date back to the original high school, so there really wasn't much work done over there. The only thing that really changed with the fields was the original softball field is now the staff parking lot. So, so that kind of got moved over, but that soccer field and the baseball stadium and the tennis courts all predate the, the, the new high school and date back to the original. I think the tennis courts maybe got expanded, but the original courts were over there. So they, you really, really touched in the late eighties, early nineties when they redid the high school, so it's not surprising that they probably need to do some landwork over there. All right. So it sounds like we have another member of the public who'd like to speak.
Cory Cross. Please state your city of residency and you'll have five minutes to speak.
I'm Cory Cross and I live in Mount Lake Terrace, six blocks that way. I'm here to discuss the town center plan and the goal to have a livable and pleasant city. I have a little flyer of some pictures I took that I'm going to reference as I speak. And I apologize for being late on discussing this. It would have been more appropriate six weeks ago, but here I am now. I'm going to be a little controversial and ask you to please stop building bike lanes as we currently have them listed. And I say that as someone who bikes my kids to his daycare every morning and afternoon and for many of our chores and et cetera. Some of the reasons are, as we, as the engineering details and specifications plan calls for is to have parking next to the bicycles, as you can see here. But if you can see my tape measure, that's the width of the door. At any time, anybody can open their door and hit me. And so without the bike lane there, it's perfectly fine because people understand that bicycles can use the road as much. But I tend to get honked at a lot more on roads where there is a bike lane because people wonder, "Why am I not in that bike lane over there next to all the parked cars that could be open at any time?" And so in this picture here, I showed kind of like the danger zones. There's a lot of areas that don't, but for example, on 236th, kind of goes with the design, is that on the westbound lane, there's parking next to it for much of the middle of the diagram there. As well as the Terrace Station Apartments area, you come down the hill and then it's all parking and especially in the morning when people are doing their drop-offs and drop-ons, people are opening those doors and going in and out of their cars frequently. And it's rather dangerous if I were to stick to the bike lanes, so I just don't. And so I feel like we're putting out effort that's not actually helping anyone. And I think there is alternatives that are better. For example, if I was going to see about the, if we looked at the engineering design spit, the, sorry, the town center plan for, say, 58th Avenue, it believes, I believe that calls for it still being a, some sort of one level below arterial road. But when I, when I drive on that, there's not that much traffic, so much that we would want to have that heavy of a road there. And I'm not saying remove any traffic lines, we couldn't, it's only two ways. But, you know, these options where we can have a protected pedestrian cycle lane or, you know, with, with a lot of different variations on that, can make that, is far more pleasant than the current plan, which says I should ride on 56th Avenue next to the diesel buses and exhausts and trucks and just a ton of traffic. But for me, I drive down 58 and it's perfectly fine without any change. So for me, if you were going to add a bike lane to that road, it would actually make my life worse. And so the final comment on the second page, we have in the engineering design standards, is our pedestrian core plan for the town center, in which 63% of the space in the right-of-way should be devoted to having our cars there and not people. And so we have a plan, which is in our latest engineering design manual, which was the Vunnerf, I'm sure I'm pronouncing that wrong, which is a mixed road of, of pedestrians, cars, a little bit of parking, lots of, uh, speed control. And I, and I would like when we, when we talk about where should we, what this town center should be and when we want to add people, we're going to add 50% of the population to Mount Lake Terrace, I think, in the next, by 2044 or something? That's the plan. And the plan is, I understand it, to put most of that into the town center area. And if we add the way we already are, then I, I don't know how that's going to be pleasant for anyone. We're going to have, our 236th and 56th are pretty much at capacity at rush hour. Like, we don't, I don't, I don't think we have any major slowdowns, but adding 50% more people to this area is not, is going to require bigger roads if we don't want to just sit in traffic all day. Or we can make sure that we design it in a way that people, we don't need people to be commuting in their cars every day. And we can have a different style of living. Like, doesn't mean the rest of the city has to change.
Thank you. Your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
And staff, I know that recently we even brought up the idea of maybe shifting the bike, you know, prioritizing the bike lanes from, you know, 56th and the other part of city 44th to like 48th and 58th. We just, I mean, we just redid our town center plan right now and, you know, just went through our engineering design standards, but when, when would there be another opportunity to, you know, maybe take a look at that in the future?
Um, well, I think there's an opportunity with the comp plan update for, that we're embarking on for 2044. I will say, and I'm not an engineer, but I do know that as far as funding goes for road improvements, a lot of times those grant funds are tied to having bike lanes as part of the, the road. And so I believe that the Main Street Phase Two, which is 56th, requires as part of the grants that the city is getting for that, that it requires a bike lane to be put on 56th Street. So there's those issues that go with federal and state funding of where you put the bike lanes. For this graphic, just this pedcore, this is not all the streets in town center. This is a street that doesn't exist, 57th, that's being proposed as a primarily pedestrian-oriented area. So you see that the sidewalks are larger, 11 feet on each side. There are some nuances in zoning for the type of land uses that would be allowed on that particular street. And there is parallel parking, or not parallel, angled parking intermittently, meaning it shifts from side to side, so that's that, that parking lane with smaller travel lanes there, which are to curb speeds and maintain that as more of a pedestrian-friendly area. Modeled after, I, the name is escaping me, of the street in Kirkland, which, and others, which is modeled kind of similar, which is kind of this, the same concepts, large sidewalks, smaller travel lanes to limit, limit speeds and parking variations down the street.
The name escapes me too. I want to say Market, but I don't know.
Hmm, it's not that.
I know exactly what we're talking about. I've walked it many times.
So anyways, that was concepted, but yeah, there's definitely an opportunity and I think maybe a further conversation with the engineers on the requirements for pedestrian improvements. I know that that's been a conversation of bike lanes and the requirements for those and conversations about separate bike lanes and parking. Presently, I know that there's no parking proposed on 56th. So, yeah. Anyways, that's my knowledge of kind of those things as of right now, but that's my understanding when discussing improvements on 56th at least.
Okay. It does sound like we have the opportunity to, to maybe take a look at.
Yeah, for sure. Yep. Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for staff regarding this?
Are we allowed to public comment on, are we allowed to comment on public comment? I guess we're doing it, but.
Well, sir, I mean, you can, I mean, if you have a follow-up question for staff regarding what the public asked.
Okay. We did get the new Ash Tow Bicycle Standards in our last engineering draft as a, as a, as a foundational document, right? Because I think they, if I remember right, they have updated, like, there's a much broader range and like more rigorous engineering standards for things like bicycle lane safety and like when you would need different kinds of bicycle lanes. And so if I remember right, we got that in our engineering document, right? Has it been approved by council yet, or?
It, it's coming back to you at your next meeting for a public hearing.
Okay, cool. I remember asking about that and I think Rich put that in there, but, so I think we do have something that has a more rigorous safety standard for bicycle lanes in that document.
All right. Anyone else? Not hearing or seeing anything, so thank you again, public, for making your comments. So thank you, staff, for responding to them.
And there's no one in the online audience.
Oh, thank you.
That concludes public comment.
That's still new. Still remembering that. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, Governance 101, Roles and Responsibilities for Boards and Commissions.
I am glad to join you tonight. My name is Carolyn Hope. I'm the new Deputy City Manager. I've been here for five weeks and was planning to do the rounds and introduce myself anyway. And then Jeff Knighton and I decided that it would be great if boards and, all the boards and commissions had a similar orientation to the city, to understand all the services the city provides, also go over board and commission roles and responsibilities, and do a primer on OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records. So I'm here tonight to do that for you. And I am just going to pull it up here, so give me one sec. I also just wanted to mention that the presentation that I'm sharing with you tonight is attached to your agenda online, so you can grab that anytime you want. There's several links, like hyperlinks, in the document. And another document that is attached is the social media policy. I'll refer to it tonight real briefly, but if you have time to take a look at that, that would be great as well. So I just went over the goals for tonight. And this is just a, an overview of the agenda. It will probably take us about 45 minutes to go through, but we can stop intermittently. So if you have questions or you want clarification, we can do that. So just starting with, at a high level, if you weren't aware, Mount Lake Terrace was incorporated in 1954 and at the time, we had about 5,100 residents. And today, actually, we just got the new numbers from the county, so our, our numbers are closer to 24,000 people. And we cover a relatively small geographic area of four square miles. And of course, we are projecting that we're going to see significant growth, as we've been talking about, by adding about 13,000 more residents to our city by 2044. Just a really brief overview of who lives in Mount Lake Terrace. We're a majority of, of white folks, but we have a growing population of ethnic and cultural diversity, from folks who are Hispanic and Latino, Black or African American, Native American, Hawaiian, Alaskan, and two or more races. All those categories are growing and we'll be doing a deeper dive into demographics with the comprehensive plan. Also, almost 20% of the people who live in town are foreign-born. In other demographic news, we, our median housing value is around 451,000. The rent, these numbers are about two years old now, but the rent was about 1,700. Median household income is about 87,000. And we have about 6.5% of our people living in poverty and almost 10% who don't have health insurance, which of course impacts income and poverty as well. We have over 550 businesses in town who employ 8,400 folks. And so, and those numbers are also projected to grow quite significantly as we grow. I think our job target is 11,000 or so, Kristy, right? So moving on to our form of government, we're a council-manager form of government. So cities in Washington are either a strong mayor form of government or a council-manager form of government. More suburban cities and newer incorporated cities are council-manager. And that means that the council members, still elected by the community, in Mount Lake Terrace in particular, all of them are elected at large. And then when the city council sits, they elect a mayor and a mayor pro tem from that group. So the mayor is not elected by the community, they're elected by the board that they're sitting on. And the council then hires a professional staff person called the city manager to run the daily operations of the city and to implement the policy goals that they have set for themselves. So the council also appoints advisory boards, like the one you're sitting on, and we'll talk about that more here in a minute. So there's your city council. Hopefully you've met them, and if not, they're out and about and really happy to meet all of the advisory board members and community members. And Jeff Knighton, if you haven't met him, he's our city manager, started in April. And his main role is, like I mentioned, to provide guidance, policy guidance to the city council. He is like the CEO of an organization, so he's responsible for daily operations, personnel, and probably one of the most important functions is delivering a budget to the city council for consideration. And here's a list of all the boards and commissions that we have. So we have an arts advisory commission who's responsible for our 1% for the art and some programming. We have a recreation and parks advisory group who's, they provide advice on many different things that happen in that department, from recreation programming, fee studies, Capitol Park projects and so forth. And they have a subcommittee called the Neighborhood Parks Improvement Subcommittee, and that is basically a designee from each of the neighborhoods who provides advice on how certain neighborhood parks should be improved. And sometimes they help with volunteer events at those parks as well. We have a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission that was formed in 2020, our newest commission, and they are responsible for helping the city council with thinking about how to be a more welcoming and inclusive city, think about policies that might help the city be more inclusive in all the different ways, and to make sure that all community members from different groups are treated equally. So we are working towards a strategic plan with them on their initiatives, so that's still kind of getting off the ground. We have the Civil Service Commission and they support staff with regulations and rules related to the police department. And the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, they decide how to spend the tax, the taxes we collect from hotels and motels in town. And usually those go towards events that create heads and beds, as they say, or more people who want to spend the night or come to the city from out of town to create economic activity. And then we have you, and we'll talk about your roles further in a little bit. And each of these boards and commissions have a staff liaison who support your work, and we'll talk a little bit about those roles later too. But any questions about boards, those boards and commissions?
What about the temporary boards? Like, the, is that on that chart? Like, I know we're going to have an advisory board for the comprehensive plan coming up.
Yes, those are not listed here, but there are ad hoc boards, as you say, that the council or city manager could start, and they would just be for a specific purpose. One temporary board I didn't mention, that's up here, is the Salary Commission, and that is by ordinance, which is a little different, but it only meets when the city council salaries are up for review. So periodically, they will be appointed and then they do their work and then they don't have to meet anymore for years, so.
On the Salary Commission, who are they appointed from? Like, the businesses in the area or?
I believe the city council appoints them, but I, I might have to check the ordinance on that one. Okay, so here's a brief organizational chart of the city, just so you can get a sense of the city council, of course, being the governing body who is accountable to the community and that the advisory boards provide recommendations, recommendations to. And then the city manager manages all the folks in the blue boxes. So we have police, human resources, information technology, finance, public works, parks, community and economic development, communications, the clerk's office, and the municipal court and jail. And we also have a city attorney who is on contract but is considered part of our director's team and attends all our city council meetings. So I was going to go through each department very briefly, just so you get a sense of the things we do and the things we don't do. And, you know, lots of folks sometimes get confused about, you know, say, what the school district does or utility district does, so just wanted to provide some clarity on that for people. So we are almost a full-service city, as you saw from the chart. The only main department we're missing is fire. And we, we have, we just all voted on annexing into the fire district. But for a smaller suburban city, we provide a lot of services. And sewer and water is one of those more unusual services for a smaller city to have. In fact, the city was incorporated early on, one of the main purposes was to have better sewer and utilities for the residents. So we do manage our, our infrastructure for wastewater, that being the pipes and the lift stations, but we send our wastewater to Edmonds and King County for treatment. We also manage water infrastructure. We get our water through the city of Everett and that comes from the Spada Reservoir up in the mountains. And we, again, manage the infrastructure of all the pipes, manholes, control valves, and this very large water tank that we have celebrations at occasionally. This water tank holds 2.5 million gallons of water and we use that every day. Stormwater is basically the water that falls on the ground from precipitation and we have to make sure that water that goes into our ground stays clean because it eventually makes its way to our water bodies. And whether that goes into the ground or a pipe or a storm drain, we just really want to protect the water quality of stormwater. And so this is a big job. We're doing a lot of education with community members and businesses. We inspect businesses and their stormwater facilities, as well as our own facilities. And then there's several capital projects underway, which can be underground pipes, but we're trying to get more of our facilities to comply with the low-impact development regulations that Department of Ecology has set for the state and that we have adopted. So thinking of ways that water can infiltrate more directly into the ground to alleviate the other types of infrastructure, pipes and so forth. And then we have streets. We have 60 miles of streets, 400 street-owned lights, we have 3,000 signs, 50 miles of sidewalk, lots of vegetation in the planting strips and in the right of way that our staff have to maintain. And, and that goes, you know, daily maintenance, as well as thinking about the capital improvements that we need in the long run. We also have traffic control. There's 15 signalized intersections that we have to manage, and we do some of that as contracted work with City of Lynwood, but also have our own staff to maintain some of that infrastructure as well. We have an engineering services division within Public Works and they are responsible for, responsible for those capital projects I mentioned. So they're either helping design or manage outside designers, plan for roads, sewer, water, stormwater, construction projects, so getting those plans in and reviewing them. But also, they play a big role in developments review as well. And so that could be for a public or a private project, but making sure that those projects sync with our system and comply with our regulations. And this is a picture of the West Side Water Main, one of the projects we just completed. And, and that's a, a primary example of, you know, infrastructure from the 1950s that we're in the process of replacing. So moving on to Recreation and Parks, in that department, we manage almost 300 acres across nine parks. Most of the acreage is surrounding Lake Ballinger and Terrace Creek, but we have some smaller parks throughout the city as well. We have a good mix of active recreation amenities, playgrounds, ballfields and so forth, and also natural areas as well. And we have a very robust recreation program, one of the most robust in the region, actually. We run all our programs internally, so we hire the staff directly as opposed to contracting out. We do recreation programs in the Recreation Pavilion and also other locations. And of course, we have a pool, so we have swim programs and lifeguards and all of those kinds of staff members as well. The other really interesting thing about our programs is having daycare, preschool, day camps. That is also a very interesting business model for the department. And we do own the clubhouse at Ballinger, the Mickey Corso Clubhouse, and that right now is leased to a nonprofit group who runs senior programs there. So getting to those buildings, we own seven buildings and these are the four that we own, operate, and maintain and live in every day. So the Recreation Pavilion, City Hall, the Police Station, and the Operations Facility, which is over by the transfer station. And then there's three that we own and maintain, but we either lease or have an agreement with another agency to use. So the fire station right next door, the Mickey Corso Clubhouse, as I just mentioned, and the library. So we're responsible, responsible for the capital maintenance and the capital improvements on all seven of those buildings. So the Recreation and Parks Department also manages the public art program. So we have a 1% for the arts ordinance, and that is for basically 1% of a capital project that's paid for by the general fund. So that would be parks projects or building projects primarily. And those funds go towards our public art fund and the Arts Commission decides on which artists to commission or to buy art from. We have 13 public arts in the inventory at the moment, and the commission had just recommended to the city council a new artwork that will be at the light rail station. So, and council approved that, so that's going to be underway soon. We have many community events in our small town, which is really great, and there's, most of these we are producing, but there's a couple that we partner with other agencies for or organizations. So, like Tour de Terrace from this past weekend is run by an outside organization, but we do support them in making sure that it is a successful event. So, and I think all of these other events, we produce in-house. So our next big one is National Night Out, and hopefully we'll see you there. So at the Police Department, this is, again, internal, we have our own police force, and there are many things that the Police Department does besides protect us and look out for the safety of our community. They also have animal control, they do code enforcement, they have a domestic violence advocate, they're out doing community programs to build relationships with folks, like our cops and clergy program is just one example. They provide safe internet options for people and many other things. So we have a robust department. And then Community and Economic Development, Kristy can explain this better than I. Do you want to take?
[laughing]
So Community and Economic Development consists primarily of long-range planning, which is what you folks are here for. So anytime we're looking at our planning documents, whether it's a comprehensive plan or transportation plan, anytime we're looking at code language, so zoning, we're in the process of doing engineering standards. You guys will soon have a hearing on a new tree ordinance. All those things that are more policy-related and vision documents and those type of things, then that's what the Planning Commission is doing. Part of the department is also the development review, so the day-to-day. Land use, all the different types of land use permits that we process. Any type of site plan review, conditional use permits, variances, subdivision, short plots, any of those things come through our department, as well as coordination with the other departments for civil review permits, public works permits. We see all of those things coming through our front counter. In addition to that, we have the Building Department. So all building permits. We have an electrical inspector, which is not that common. A lot of jurisdictions have Labor and Industries do their inspections. We do that in-house. So we have those services as well here. We coordinate with the Code Compliance Officers a great deal in the Police Department for all things related to code enforcement, which is a task that never ceases to be. So working on coordinating that more effectively and have passed some code language of some kind of chronic nuisance violations in the city more recently in trying to address those kind of longstanding properties that we have issues with. And we've all seen them around town. So actively working on those things. We're also in the process of working on the continued permitting for the Light Rail Project. City was part of the land use permitting and the civil review for the Light Rail Station in the city on private property outside of the I-5 right-of-way. So City's been working on that for the last several years. We're getting on the downhill slide of that process, so hoping that we can wrap up the building permit review and some of the other conditional use permit process and conditions that we worked on as part of the permitting for the Light Rail Station. So that's ongoing as well. Our department right now just is also working on improved software permitting processes internally and externally so we can provide more information to our residents. If they have questions on a certain address or want to know what's going on, they'll have that accessible electronically when we're processing a permit or the conditions of those permits, the plans associated with those permits. Up until COVID, the city was still taking everything in by paper copy. We kind of paper clipped together an electronic system, and we have the resources now to get new software to improve that system. So we've been working on that. Soft launch is this year, tentatively in November of this year. So we're working hard on that. That'll be taking all of our existing data and putting it on the new permitting system. And then we're working on new application formats and all of those things that we're working on currently right now, too. So I think that's the high points. And we're also involved in economic development activities as well.
Yeah, so in economic development, definitely a multifaceted endeavor. We don't have one dedicated staff. It's definitely part of Kristy's department, but also the City Manager's Office gets involved in other departments as needed. But we do contract with Economic Alliance of Snohomish County to help us recruit and attract businesses and folks to come to Montlake Terrace. And we have a new chamber in town, the Montlake Terrace and Briar Chamber of Commerce. And then the county also has an economic development role as well. So trying to leverage our partners to support us in that important work. And as we mentioned earlier, we contract with Snohomish County Fire for fire services. And with annexation, there won't be any changes to the services provided. Again, Fire does more than suppress fires. Primarily, their work is actually EMT and paramedic work lately. And also, they do some education, fire prevention-type work, inspections. And they have a Fire Marshal that actually works very closely with Kristy's group as well. And then we have Administration, the City Manager's Office, which includes myself, the City Clerk, and several administrative assistants, the Communications Manager, a Public Records Officer, the IT Group, and the Human Resources Manager. And our roles are to support staff and the Council to get their work done. And Finance is number-one responsibility, to prepare and manage the city's budget. But of course, also has a lot of other very important responsibilities, such as accounts payable, accounts receivable. We do receive money from different state and federal agencies, as well as grantors. There's fees that come in that we have to process. And there's a lot of funds that are considered enterprise funds. We have to make sure that those funds go in the right bucket or account to make sure that they're only spent on the things they're meant to be spent for. So there's a lot of important tracking. We have to go through an annual audit from the State Auditor's Office, but also several grant agencies also do audits. So there's a lot of eyes on the work of the Finance Department and the city as a whole. So those are just a few things Finance does to support us. And that brings us to the budget. So before I go there, any questions on the services that we provide?
So I actually had just a couple of, you know, kind of almost more like clarifications. When you're listing all the city departments and you included the Municipal Court and the Jail.
Yeah.
Is that contracted?
Yes, yep.
Because I know we don't have a jail. I know we have holding cells, but we don't have a jail.
Snohomish County, yeah.
Okay. And then the, I know I have one other one there. I know for the, oh, yeah, so for the Police. I know back in the day, animal control was contracted through the City of Edmonds. Is that still the case, or does Terrace have its own animal control now?
We have our own animal control staff. It's a part of a, half a FTE.
And then with the Fire Station, since the Fire District, you know, it's going to be fully annexed and taking over, are we going to maintain ownership of that building? Or is there going to be some sort of swap?
We are going to maintain ownership of the building.
Okay. Are we going to be charging them rent? Or is it kind of a?
Not to my understanding, yeah.
Okay. So it's like, they provide the service, we give them the building? It's kind of a?
Yes.
Exchange?
Yeah.
So when I go to the grocery store, QFC or 99 Ranch, I'll often take my bicycle from my house. And I will ride on a mix of bike lanes and off-street facilities and things that go through parks. That seems like three different city departments. And I know in our current Transportation Master Plan, I don't think we've got any of those sort of active-use things in there. It looks like a few of those on the org chart like are under your purview, but a few aren't. As we're going into the Comprehensive Plan and we're kind of looking at these things, how do those interact? And are there certain, you know, like, is it a problem to put active transportation in parks? Or like, are there, you know, are there divisions between the organizations or sub-organizations that should be maintained? And how do they communicate?
Yeah, that's a great question. I would say that we work pretty collaboratively on that. And one great example of that is our work at the Sound Transit Light Rail Station. So Jeff Betts, who's our Recreation and Parks Director, is working closely with Kristy and our Public Works Team on designing improvements to the Trails Through Veterans Park to connect Civic Campus to the Light Rail Transit. And also, Sound Transit will be building part of its trail to also connect there. So that's just one example. But one of the great things about the Comprehensive Plan update coming up is that Council also approved funding for the Transportation Master Plan update. And that does, I think, as you mentioned, include a pedestrian and bicycle plan. And that could be modernized to say active transportation. I don't, we haven't really scoped that yet. But certainly, there is connections between the Comp Plan Update and the Transportation Master Plan Update. And Kristy, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I would just say that we have an existing plan that needs to be updated. And your point's well taken. We just had an email about some improvements that Edmonds is doing in better connections between the two cities. So we're having a comprehensive system in place where we're linking not only the city's facilities, but the adjacent city's facilities, too. So, yeah, I think all of those issues need to be updated in how those linkages occur, for sure.
Okay, and it sounds like because it's the purview of several different departments, you have some internal processes to talk about. And maybe we'll hear from Parks at some point, or?
Yeah.
We should go to them.
Right. I would say the blessing of being so small is that we see each other nearly every day. And so we do have a lot of collaboration and coordination on different things. That doesn't mean that you don't need some type of strategic planning to make sure that those projects happen for capital planning as well, just like you do for the streets. Those trail systems and setting aside money or going actively after grants to get those improvements, so, yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? I thought I'd just add, too, about the Fire Department, since we have a lot of new commissioners who might be new to the city and staff that might be new to the city as well. Terrace used to have two fire stations. The other one was just behind, well, not just behind, about a block or so east of where the QFC is. But when the Fire District took over, they decided to move that station to Briar. Note the bitterness in my voice.
I heard something there.
Yeah, so, yeah, but Terrace used to have two stations. So that station did, Terrace used to, or Briar used to contract with Terrace for that second station. So Terrace did provide fire services to Briar. So that station was kind of doing double duty for Terrace and Briar. The new station still does double duty, but it's no longer in Terrace. It's actually in Briar. And if you ask me, I think the other station was better centrally located, but who am I to make that observation?
Shall we move to budget? All right. So just a couple slides on budget. Budget is a big deal, but next year is a budget year. So this is just an outline of, a high-level outline of what a calendar year of planning for budget might look like. And the first thing that we're getting prepared to do is a community survey. And we try to do that in the winter before our budget year. And if you're not familiar, the community survey is usually a list of questions that we repeat. Most of them are repeated each time because they're like performance measures, and we want to see how we're doing over time. There may also be a few new questions each time, which might relate to the City Council's goals, just to get a pulse on where the community is for those kinds of things. And then after the survey's done, typically, the City Council will have a retreat, and they'll update their goals and priorities for the following year based on that information. And then the direct leadership team, staff level, will have their retreat and figure out how we're going to prioritize our budget items in our work plan. And then we will spend the summer preparing the budget. And that is usually presented to the City Council around September, October. And they have two to three months to deliberate over the budget and learn about all the different elements of the budget before making a decision. And the goal is to have an adopted, balanced budget by December. So that is the timeline. Just a couple overview slides on the kinds of money that we have. So from an expenditure standpoint, we have three major funding areas that amount up to $90.5 million. And those are divided by the capital, general government, and utility funds. And I'll talk about those in a little more detail. So the general government funds are basically things that we need to operate as a city. They're ongoing expenditures, like salaries, money we might need for consultants or contractors to do anything from professional services work to maintenance work that's not capitalized. And these are the sources of where we get some of that funding. You'll see property tax and sales tax are some of our largest areas where we get our funding, but also utility taxes are pretty high up there. And I wanted to break down for you a little bit more on property tax, since people tend to get a bit focused on how high their property taxes are. And actually, a lot of that money goes to other taxing districts. And so the smaller graphic on the bottom to the left shows you how your property tax bill is distributed in Montlake Terrace to the different jurisdictions. So schools, whether it's at the state or local level, get the predominant amount of your funding. And then the County Library District, Hospital District, and Transit Authorities all get a little piece of the pie as well. So that helps explain that a little. And then we also have the Capital Fund. Again, that's for construction-related projects. And the funding from that can come from various things. We have a real estate excise tax, which is collected every time a property is sold. And that's got some flexibility, according to the state legislature, on how we can use that. We have our Capital Improvement Fund, which is a little bit of general fund money, but mostly from grants or from dedicated enterprise fund revenues. And then the Street Construction Fund. Utilities, those funds are dedicated to each of the utilities. So water, stormwater, and sewer have their own funds dedicated to them primarily from user fees, but they can also come from grants as well. So I think it's important to think about when people talk about their bills for utilities that that funding not only maintains and operates the system, but it goes towards the capital expenses needed to repair the infrastructure in the long run. Any questions on budget before I move on?
Yeah, real quick. So as the Planning Commission, we used to receive at least once a year, kind of a budgetary update, especially when it came to, you know, capital improvement dollars, you know, because they get scheduled a couple of years out. So we would have on our radar when certain projects were going to be happening and, you know, how the budget would ramp up for those, you know, from year one to year five or whatever. I don't, we don't seem to get those as often anymore. Is it possible to be kind of brought back into the loop on that? So we can?
We can talk about that.
Get a better sense of what's going on, especially to see how the decisions we make in crafting the Comp Plan actually flesh out in terms of dollars spent and when those dollars are being spent.
Okay. All right, so speaking of which, we're going to talk about the guiding documents for the city. And the Comprehensive Plan, which you're embarking on the process of doing a major update for, is really the most important guiding document for the city because it sets the policies and goals for all of the services that we just talked about. And also, very importantly, the quality of life and experiences that you want to feel as a resident living in the community. And there's sort of two tiers of documents that fall under that. So the green boxes really talk about how we operationalize implementing the Comprehensive Plan from an internal perspective. So the functional plans are things like the Transportation Master Plan that we just talked about, the Recreation and Parks Open Space Plan, our utility comprehensive plans. And those are the kinds of and those are the kinds of plans that take that goal and then they come up with a strategy, which is really a project or a program that addresses that goal. So basically, they're coming up with a capital improvement plan or a set of programs that address how to meet that, the goals in the Comprehensive Plan. Those functional plans are still fairly high, so they might name a project and they might physically describe where it's going to happen, but they don't have a design yet. And so the next tier of plans could be like a master plan more for, say, parks or buildings or some kind of feasibility study for something like that, or design documents for something like a utility or a road. And even for parks, projects and buildings, you would go from a master plan to design to build those construction documents for the, for the contractor. And then there's a category that I called Strategic Plans. It's really a loose category. That means a plan that again operationalizes a program. So one example might be an ADA Transition Plan. So again, we're taking something from the goals and from the functional plans that's identified as a priority and we're providing more detail about how we're going to implement that program. And if you're not familiar, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires all cities to have a transition plan to identify the facilities that need to be upgraded, that were built after a certain year, and we need to prioritize how we're going to make those improvements because it's unrealistic for us to do them all at once. So there's many steps involved in that, but that's just like one example of a unique kind of a planning process that is separate from a design and construction project. The blue boxes on the right, they talk more about council actions and a lot of the work that you do here. So there's the city code that is comprised of all the regulations for the city and that includes the zoning regulations, the municipal code for how the city operates and governs itself, and amendments such as the engineering standards that we're working on. And the, the code is updated by ordinance, so again, you will be working and are working on several of those. So that can just be a very minor and small item that just we need to fix, or it could be a major update like the engineering standards or a complete new review of, say, a section of the code like park rules. So those are all items that we might see in our future. Resolutions are more administrative and those can be anything from like approving a grant, allowing staff to go forward to apply for a grant or to accept grant funding. That might be a good example of a resolution, while proclamations are usually more celebratory in acknowledging a holiday, a person, a program, a place, and it's probably the most official way that a council can commemorate something or somebody. And then on the side, I've got the budget because that is probably our most important operational document. It's very informative. If you want to know about the city and all the things that I talked to you about tonight, actually you can find most of it in the budget. And it's not a really fun read necessarily unless, unless you like numbers, but it is super informative and, and definitely guides the work that we're doing in the sense that we, you know, can't do work without resources, whether that's people or funding to pay for things. So that is online and I've got a link for you later on. Any questions about the kinds of documents that we're working with? All right. Most of you are probably familiar with this, but just wanted to talk a little bit about how ordinances are developed. And really, this is very simplistic, but there's an idea and that could come from a community member, a board or commission member, staff or council, and it's proposed to the council. And sometimes they decide that a commission might need to look at that before they want to review it in detail. Sometimes they may decide to take it on right away. If it goes to a commission or to the city council, the staff would be there to provide data, analysis and options, talk about the risks and the pros and cons and all of that good stuff. And then the council would deliberate about those, that information that's provided to them and ultimately they would vote on the measure. So we're going to move on to board and commission roles and responsibilities, and this starts at a pretty high level because it applies to all boards and commissions. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the general things that apply to everyone. So first, annually, every board and commission is typically preparing a work plan and either the chair or a combination of members of the board or commission will make a presentation to the city council with staff support, just to go through what their accomplishments were from the prior year and what their goals are in the coming year. And really, the, the goal of the, and the role of the staff liaison is to support you with information so you can run an efficient meeting, that you have the information you need to make decisions or recommendations and to help you set out that work plan, given the budget and the council goals and the staff's priorities for the year based on those things. So there's certainly opportunity for board and commission members to influence the work plan, but it is also guided by those things that council sets for us. And then throughout the year, the board or commission makes recommendations to city council and it's the staff liaison's job to make sure the council understands what your recommendations are, and that usually comes in the form of a staff report that's presented to city council and oral presentations as well. So that is that. And here we are in the Planning Commission. Kristi, I don't know if you want to talk to any of these, you want me to, you want to interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So by ordinance, the Planning Commission has seven members who should be residents of Mount Lake Terrace. You serve at four-year terms and they expire at the end of June. And at the first meeting of the new year, elections for chair and vice chair are held. Your roles are dictated both by ordinance and by the state law, by the RCWs. And if you hadn't, haven't read them, I did put a, a link to both here in the PowerPoint so you can get to them if you want. The Planning Commission is a unique body in that it is legislative and you can hold your own public hearings and make recommendations on ordinances, resolutions and other reports to council. Kristi, do you want to chime in on any more of the details here as far as what you bring to them?
I would say we bring, most, some things are legislated that we bring to the Planning Commission by state law. So there are several things that you folks are going to get that are mandated by state law and then also in our code for recommendation to city council. Where it comes to primarily budget decisions like fee schedules or those other things, then those are typically legislative actions and, and you folks won't see them. Previous, the Planning Commission weighed in heavily on land use permits and, and that was pretty common around the state. And then in 1990, the state got the Growth Management Act. And so a lot of those day-to-day activities went to a hearing examiner system, which is typically a land use attorney that acts as basically the judge in, presides over hearing those cases, with the thought that the Planning Commission should really be invested on long-range planning decisions and more important high-level policy decisions. And so here at the city of Mount Lake Terrace, that's kind of incrementally morphed over time where some things originally went to a hearing examiner and now you'll see that most of the land use decisions for a project will go to the hearing examiner or they'll be done administratively based on a set of guidelines and criteria that comes through a recommendation of the Planning Commission that gets adopted by council in the form of an ordinance, as, as far as that goes. That's basically ends up in our municipal code as code language for criteria and such. So that's kind of how that process works. So we've seen kind of a change in the, the roles and functions of a planning commission over time.
And Kristi, would you mind just mentioning the number of meetings per month and any other?
Oh, sure.
Like homework or requirements?
Yeah, so we have, generally speaking, two meetings a month, the second and fourth Mondays of every month is typical. There will be times where a meeting will get canceled, usually happens two or three times a year, or if it falls on a holiday, maybe in December, a lot of times the second meeting will be canceled for the holiday season and the like. But there's also other meetings that you guys will be involved in, particularly coming up with the Comprehensive Plan, where you'll be invited to open houses or listening sessions or other things like that, participation in events, looking for volunteers or the like, sub-area plans. A lot of times, planning commissions will be involved in some of those things. So depending on the work program, and I would also say as far as our work program goes, there's the things that the Planning Commission would like to do, and then there's things that we're required to do by state law. And so some of those things were mandated to do by the state legislature at certain timing. So of course, when those mandated things come down, those are something that we have to act on and that we have to put in our work program to be compliant with state law. So some of those things, the Comprehensive Plan, there's mandatory update every eight years and that's what we're embarking on, or it's actually ten years, they just changed the time. So every ten years now, it was eight years, but, so every ten years, you're required to do a major update to your Comprehensive Plan. So there's things like that that we're required to do. If there's updates to building codes or fire codes and those type of things, then we put those on the work plan. Other than that, it's things that are priorities that the Planning Commission will set forth as priorities in their work program every year, which is what Carolyn was talking about. And then that work program goes and gets presented to city council for adoption of your work program. And budget dollars afforded that, so that's how that process works.
Thanks.
I think I'd add, in the past, the Planning Commission, while we, we're not the ones that set the fee schedule, staff as a courtesy would usually come to us, especially when they were, you know, starting their next review cycle and, you know, looking just for feedback and input. So while we don't make the ultimate decision, you know, we're kind of a sounding board for staff before staff takes it to city council. So, you know, we can say, hey, okay, that sounds good, or we can have concerns. We got that as well when they were, they decided to raise the utility rates that came before us and we knew that was going to be, you know, contentious and, you know, sure enough it was, but. So, so things like that where we may not be making a, a formal recommendation, we, we still have the ability, usually at least once a year, every other year, depending on the cycle, to provide input and feedback as well. So we're, we're still, we're kind of a passive part of that process.
Thank you. Okay, just a few more slides on boards and commissions. So just a couple sort of things to keep in mind as far as how the meetings are run and just ensuring that, that the chair is a facilitator and ensuring that people have, each of the members have time to speak and that speaking time is fairly equitable, that everyone has a chance to voice their opinions and that we allow a space for people to learn. This is all really complicated information and you're not full-time staff and we don't expect you to be, so just being open to questions and hearing people's opinions. We do use parliamentary procedure, more so in the Planning Commission than some of the other boards and commissions. Definitely want to make sure that we use Robert's Rules when we're voting and that you're familiar with some of those main motions. So I do have some documents I can share with you if you want a little more information on just some basics of Robert's Rules, because if you download the book from Amazon, it is overwhelming. And there's the amendment to the amendment to the motion and we don't really want to go down that road. Of course, the vice chair can serve as the backup to the chair if they're unavailable and the staff is responsible for preparing the agenda and taking the minutes and providing you with meeting materials and presentations, as I mentioned. And just some roles of the duties of the chair, just for those of you who are new and might be wondering. There's a few key steps, of course, there's more than that, just this is a simplified version, but making sure that we open the meeting as we did today with the roll call and acknowledging the agenda and walking through the agenda, acknowledging people who want to speak, stating questions for the vote and ensuring we have a first and second motion and that everyone votes, ensuring that we meet our, the time of the meeting and if we're looking like we're going to go over, make sure, asking folks if they're willing to stay or not, deciding questions of order and responding to inquiries and then closing the meeting. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add a few things, especially since we have a lot of new Planning Commissioners. Voting can get messy and ugly and it's really easy to get confused and backwards on what exactly you're doing. The way that my predecessor ran meetings and the way I like to run meetings as well is, you know, let's try and get everything hashed out before we get to the vote, makes voting a lot easier, you know, allow everybody to, you know, kind of provide their opinion and, and input and we, you know, try and come into a consensus, consensus before the vote. It always makes it smoother. It helps too when staff provides sort of guides for making motions when it's something that staff is presenting towards us, you know. You know, the, you know, the different options, you know, you know, approving basically as it was presented or, you know, if, if we have any amendments that we wanted to make or whatever, you know, that provides it easier, an easier and smoother process so you don't get hung up, especially after the fact. The only other thing that I would say, especially for, you know, since pretty much all of you are fairly new, you know, we, we always want to provide an opportunity to speak, especially responding to any kind of comment that staff would make. Just make sure that you're recognized before you speak, so generally that's going to be some sort of acknowledgement from me, you know, you can, you know, usually raise your hand or sometimes it might be as simple as kind of just like eye contact. I don't know if you guys have noticed, even tonight's meeting, I'm constantly looking back and forth to see, you know, does anybody have, making an intention? It's getting, it's a little tricky when we're both here and online, it was even worse when it was all online, but just make sure that you're recognized first. Usually what I'll do is also rely on whoever's the vice chair to kind of be my eyes behind my back. So if I'm looking one way, hopefully they're looking the other way and then they can just kind of, you know, ideally they're sitting right next to me and they can just kind of, you know, give me a nudge or something, oh, hey, you know, so-and-so wants to speak and then I'll acknowledge them. But it's just, it's just easier to manage the meeting for me if you, if you just wait for that acknowledgement before speeding, you know, kind of speaking out, because a lot of times multiple commissioners might want to say something all at the same time, so it's just, it's just more of an orderly process.
Okay, we talked about the annual work plan already, so I'll just kind of skip over On communications, I think the main point here is you're all community members and of course welcome to speak to city council or speak at public comments to city council, but unless you as a, as a commission have voted on a particular issue and that, say, Nick is appointed to be our spokesperson at the council meeting to make a statement, then any statement you make to city council or the public or the media is your own opinion and not you as a planning commissioner. So just keep that in mind. You're welcome to your own opinions, but just please don't speak on behalf of the commission unless you've all decided as a majority to do so and that you're the appointed person to make that statement. And if you're speaking or intending to speak to the media, please work through your staff liaison and our communications manager. The last point here is really a little bit more of a public records thing, but if you haven't been advised already, we are trying to get you all eventually city email addresses, but that isn't available at the moment. So if you could create, if you, we recommend that you create a separate email address, potentially following this naming convention, so that staff know when an email's coming from a commissioner. But that way for public records, which we'll talk records, which we'll talk about in a minute, it will be easier to identify your records related to the city, and we will not have to ask you to come through your personal data to find records that we might be required to share with a community member. This page has a whole bunch of hyperlinks, so feel free to explore those as you have time. And that is the end of the orientation, and then I have just a little bit of an overview on open public meetings and public records. So just wanted to pause and make sure if there's any questions or comments you have on the orientation part.
We don't need a separate email address if we're, I don't know, emailing the city about a broken water main or something, right?
No, 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 no. This is more for your commission work. And it's not required, but it's a strong recommendation.
So I think I would add, if, if you have an issue or a question, email staff. Don't email other commissioners. Staff will direct your comment, usually to Kristi, or maybe another city staffer who Kristi's designated to respond to your question. You don't want to have any kind of communication outside of the meeting, because you run the risk of having a, I guess you would call it an electronic quorum.
Yes, a meeting.
And that you can get into serious hot water, when you get into that situation. So yeah, any, any kind of questions, comments, communication, direct it to staff. Obviously, in the, in the meeting setting, when we're here officially, you direct it to me, I'll redirect it to staff. But when you're off by yourself, and it's just an email, directly to staff, staff will, I mean, you can CC me if you want, but I'm not going to reply. It's just kind of an FYI. Staff is, staff's going to take the lead on that.
That's good. Okay, hopefully you've all received an email from Jennifer Joki, our clerk, with a letter from the city manager asking you to take some online training for open public meetings and the Public Records Act. We really encourage you to watch those videos. They're going to be very informative. I'm going to give you a high-level overview tonight. But these are very important pieces of legislation for you to know about as a commissioner. As your chairperson has just mentioned, the Open Public Meetings Act means that the public is, the public is welcome and allowed to come to all of the meetings of any governing body of this organization, and you're considered a governing body, as well as the other advisory boards. So that means that the public could be allowed to make public comment, if you have public comment on your agenda, and currently you do, and that we're, as staff, required to publicize the meeting ahead of time, and there's certain deadlines we have to do that, to make sure the community knows when these meetings are occurring, and that we have to provide access in different ways. And nowadays, the new state, the law has been changed recently with post-COVID, that we can have hybrid meetings. So making sure people know how they can access both in-person and online to get to the meeting.
The current record for an attendee for one of our meetings is joining us from France, so.
Wow.
I dare any of you to beat that.
That's great. Okay, and just as the chairperson had just mentioned, a meeting is both what we're doing right now, but it also can be if a quorum of the commission is talking on the telephone. Whether or not it was publicized, it's considered a meeting. If you're having an email exchange with four of you, or more chiming in on answers or thoughts. And so we just need to be really careful of that. That could be texting, and even on social media. So just be cognizant of your comments on social media, and definitely, please do not create your own social media group for the planning commission. That would be a whole set of new public records, and considered, possibly, a meeting.
One other thing where you have to be careful with, you know, possibly, you know, getting it into an accidental quorum. Hopefully, we'll have some opportunity soon to do some site visits, because, you know, we're always talking about other neighborhoods, and other cities, other jurisdictions, seeing examples of what they did, you know, for different neighborhood planning, town center planning. So we're actually going on field trips. But because it's usually either just us, or us and the city council, it's technically considered a meeting. So even, even though we're out, and it's considered a meeting, we're out and about together, walking around, you kind of want to be careful, and don't have more than three of you at a time, kind of group together, if you're saying, oh, hey, look at that, I really like that awning, or what, you know. If there's a quorum, then you've got to be careful.
Well, and if we're advertising it, so in that case, if you were on a field trip with, and all the commissioner and city councils, council members were invited, we would be advertising that as a public meeting, so it would be okay for you to talk about business in that case.
Yeah.
We would have someone walking with us, taking minutes, and so forth. If you were all going to a conference together, we might notice it, that there could be a quorum, but that's not officially a meeting. And so that's where you would want to be more careful to not have a quorum, to talk about what you just learned in your session on planning commission work. But, and also, one of the other commissions had asked me, does this mean I can't have the commission over for a barbecue? You're welcome to do that, just don't talk about business. So I did mention, the social media policy is attached to your agenda as well, so take a quick look at that as well. And we, we actually just went through training with our city attorney on public records and open public meetings, and just reminding everyone that if we don't comply, there is a financial risk, and for open public meetings, you have a personal risk of being fined if you are doing so outside of the rules. So for public records, again, all the documents that we create for this meeting are available for the public at their request. So whether or not they're online, there could be something that we do for the commission that is, you know, maybe a document that we prepared for a previous meeting, or notes, or a communication that was sent out via email, even a voicemail that you, maybe you left for Kristi on her phone in the afternoon. All of those things could be considered a public record. And so that's why we have to be really cognizant about who's making records, and how we're caring for them, because it is our job to respond to public records requests in a number of days, five days, and we have opportunities to make extensions. But the more and more extensions we ask for, the bigger our risk is for being sued, essentially, for being noncompliant. And there's a growing, there's more and more folks who are suing agencies for noncompliance with public records, and that could be for taking too long to respond, for not providing a complete set of the records, and some other related kinds of deficiencies. And the fines are significant. There are millions of dollars, and in one case, at least one city in Washington's gone bankrupt over it. So that's why we ask, when you're creating a record, if you can keep it succinct and in one place. It's pretty unusual that we have to call for records from commissioners, but it just helps reduce the liability that way. So, and there's a lot in the Public Records Act that are really focused on staff. So there's one of the trainings that we, that you'll see on that website, that is really focused more on staff. I don't think we asked you to take that one. But we do have to retain records for different lengths of time, depending on the type of record it is. There's a whole set of regulations around electronic records and hard copy records. We also require our contractors to comply with our public records. So, you know, anyone, a consultant, a construction contractor, all those folks are also required to comply. So that is kind of an overview. And I did mention all the types of things that are considered records, so videos, voicemails, texts, social media, all sorts of written records. And that is a screenshot of the training, where we're hoping that you'll spend a little time looking at the videos offered by the Attorney General's Office. And all commissioners and governing body members are required to take the training every four years. So if you have taken the training within the last four years, you can fill out their certificate with the date that you took it, and if you haven't, if you could do that now, that would be great. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
No questions, it's a comment, thank you. I really appreciate this. I feel more informed.
Yeah, love it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I've been here for months, and I haven't had an orientation, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's like.
Nothing is there.
I've been waiting for this.
And then you said that staff is going to be sending out an email for the training?
Um, yes.
I did.
You did? Okay.
If you did, it went to your Gmail account.
It went to that one that I never look at, okay.
Yeah, if you didn't find it, just email Kristi and/or Jennifer, and we'll get it to you.
I got that email tied to the city-issued iPad that I was only using during a remote meeting, so I just have to turn that thing on again. All right. All right, if we've got nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, director's report.
All right, just have a few things to update you on. So staff was at Torrid Terrace at the city booth, started our outreach activities for the comprehensive plan. So we were promoting our survey for the comp plan, talked to a lot of folks over Saturday and Sunday, and had materials there for them. And then we have a, basically a business card, I wanted to keep it small, so it wouldn't end up in the trash or on the ground, which links people to our overall comp plan website, which got launched last week. And everything to do with the comprehensive plan update will be on that website. So all materials thus forth, we will be putting on that website for the public to take a look at, and keep informed of what's going on. Staff will also be working the city booth for National Night Out coming up, as well, as part of our outreach efforts. So, and then the city council is tentatively looking over recommendations for the comp plan advisory group on August 3rd, to present materials, and then tentatively making appointments on August 7th for that. We're still looking for folks to fill that committee, particularly if you guys know of any at-large community members that would like to participate. We're looking for a member from each of our commissions, and that includes planning commission, as well as, you know, liaison type of capacity. So looking for recommendations. We would really love to have a youth representative this time around. Changes to the Growth Management Act are really focusing on inclusion and equity, driving the different elements of the comprehensive plan this time around. So we're really looking to have a diverse set of folks that are sitting on that advisory group. So if you guys know of anyone, or want to act in a capacity as a liaison, those meetings for that group will be once a month, tentatively for about 12 months. So if anybody has capacity to do that, or know of someone, send them our way. We would love to hear from them as well. For some of the upcoming meetings that you have, your next meeting will be the public hearing for the engineering development manual that you guys reviewed previously, so that's coming your way. And then for the next two meetings, you'll be reviewing draft tree ordinance. Laura Reed, our stormwater manager, came and just gave you kind of a brief overview of what's going on. You'll actually have the draft to review. That's tentatively slated on August 28th meeting, and then a public hearing to follow on in September for you guys as well. I was also told that photos will be taken at your next meeting. So get your tuxedos out and your ball gowns, because you want to look snazzy. But we're doing individual shots of all the planning commissioners, so dress how you feel, but just beware that it'll be photo, photo opportunity time. So we've done it both ways, taken individual photos, and then a group photo, and then something always happens for the group photo, and it doesn't happen. It always, it's like somebody's not here, and then people get ready, and all that good stuff. So anyways, so for who's here, photos will be taken at the next meeting. So jot a note, and we'll try to remind you to put it on the agenda. We should put it on the agenda, just to remind you, so you're not like, oh, yeah, you told me that last time. Other than that, I don't have anything really too big to report on, unless somebody has a question about something that's going on, I can try to answer it.
I looked better in my last picture, so I might just keep that. You mentioned that council's looking at the comprehensive plan advisory group. Has there ever been a scope assigned to that yet, or are they deciding that on the 3rd of August, like what they're actually doing?
So we're working on a more, we have a general work plan right now with our consultant, OTAC, and we're working on that now, of refining the actual timing of the different elements, and a more refined work program.
Okay, and it sounds like we've got, on the 3rd, they're going to decide what the scope of the organization is, and then on the 7th, they're going to make appointments? Have we been recruiting for that position?
So, say that again, have they?
Have we been recruiting for this board?
Yeah, more recruiting needs to be done. So I say, tentatively, will depend on how many folks that, you know, we have put forth from kind of diverse groups in the community, at-large members, and those type of things. So when we did the public participation plan, there was a list of different kind of groups throughout the community that were trying to engage. So trying to get a cross-section of people on the advisory group, and then also using targeted outreach as we go along, to reach other people as well.
Okay, I definitely, I'm sorry, I'd definitely like to hear more about it as this develops. It sounds like it's still kind of floating a little bit, but I know that's going to be a really important group to work with, and knowing how we do that, I definitely would like to hear more.
Yeah, so if that's something that you are tentatively interested, drop us a line and let us know, like, who's interested. I know that council will be making those appointments to that, so.
Okay. I had a few other questions.
Before you leave that, on that same topic, how many are we going to put on that advisory report, again? Well, it's looking probably like 12 to 15, tentatively, and it's gotten a little bit bigger, potentially just for representation by some of the boards. So the Rakin Parks Board, the Arts Commission, and others, in addition to trying to get a cross-section. So the number hasn't been set, but enough that we're trying to get a good cross-section of folks. So business owners, development community, you know, at-large, churches, different social agencies, you know, the like.
Cool. I had another question, but I want to let other people ask questions also. Okay, I guess this is more of a comment. I've been hearing more and more about the Town Center Grocery Store, or lack thereof, including some op-eds. I think it's becoming a bigger and more noticeable problem, now that development is starting to happen. And I know we've got a lot, like, you know, just from a, like a pro forma perspective, it's like complicated to get a grocery store here, but I think it is going to become something that we're going to have to do sooner rather than later. I was curious. I was curious what your thoughts on that were and like, I think at some point it, you know, might wind up working its way into our agendas and emergencies, something or like, and I kind of want to be ahead of that, right? Like, you know, it's really important to get these services into Town Center, otherwise Town Center doesn't really work because people have to drive to places where there are services and we just have a bunch of apartments. And it's complicated not to untangle and I don't know of other places that have done that, so this is more of a question, like, how do we do that and what can we do?
So, you know, I know that there's a desire for a grocery store in Town Center. There's zoning in place to allow grocery stores in Town Center. So I guess the next step, so economically residential leads commercial, right? And so when a retailer like a grocery store is wanting to come into an area, they're looking at the number of residential units in order to place a grocery store. Grocery stores are particularly hard because their profit margins are very, very small. So a lot of communities want a grocery store and they struggle to get a grocery store just like we're struggling in Town Center. And part of that issue is surrounding the peripheral of the, I guess, of our city limits is a lot of grocery stores, a lot of grocery retailers. So when we were doing the Town Center Plan, the thought was to allow for grocery stores and to actually allow for provisions to make it a little bit easier for somebody to put a grocery store in, but not requiring a grocery store. So I guess there's a couple ways of doing that. Outright requiring a grocery store to be located in certain areas of which you risk nothing being developed on a particular piece of property until there is a grocery store, which could potentially take years. Or you could look at things like alleviating impact fees, so for park impact fees or transportation impact fees to entice a grocery store or something like that. But when the Town Center Plan was originally adopted in 2007, all of Town Center ground floor was designated for commercial development and that did not happen. And additional information that we looked at when we redid the Town Center Plan said, you guys are over-commercialed, that it's unrealistic that you're going to get that much commercial development in your Town Center core. And so the thought was, was to shrink where commercial was required in the core of Town Center on ground floor and provide options for commercial or residential outside of that, but not outright require it. So there are areas that are required for commercial development in the core of Town Center, but it gives developer more options than saying, you can only put a grocery store here. So I don't know of any place that has ever made a provision to say, you can only do this one thing and nothing else. I don't think that exists. Maybe it does, maybe somebody can prove me wrong. I don't think that happens. So I've seen in other jurisdictions that have wanted grocery stores that somebody's come in and proposed a kind of a master plan and it included a grocery store, placement of a grocery store. The grocery store never happened, the other development happened and then they redid the master planning to eliminate the grocery store. So I think that's what we're up against is, and what we've been told, is actively try to build the residential and then strategically go out and try to meet with grocers and those folks to let them know that we're here and that we want them to be here. I know that that's what Mill Creek did to get their store, but again, the store was looking at density and residences within a certain per, you know, distance of that grocery store before the grocery store went in. So anyways, thoughts is maybe doing some enticements where, you know, for a grocery store to locate that's kind of sweetens the pot, that would be, you know, a decision of council to allow that or a recommendation through this process.
Okay, I know two things I've heard of are Safeway seems to be building some of these in some of the more dense parts of Seattle. I imagine they probably have different things like parking minimums, which, you know, tend to sort of govern the floor plate of that ground floor where all the retail tends to be located. So if there are things in our building requirements that we're requiring, like if it's reducing parking minimums or allowing rentals of other places, parking or something like that, I've heard that that could be useful and I guess this is, I'm still, you know, not, I don't have solutions. This is more of a question and it's kind of an alert that it's, I think, something that we'll wind up having to address probably sooner rather than later, just based on what I've been hearing. But I'm glad that you're able to speak to it and I think being able to communicate the challenges we have and what needs to happen is, it will be good for all of us, I think, if we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, definitely look, we're, you know, we're updating our economic analysis as part of our economic vitality element. And so revisiting that and kind of seeing where we're at. We were hoping that we were going to get a smaller type Target installation down at Terrace Station and that looked very promising for a while of more like of an urban, smaller, but you could get groceries and prescriptions and that type of thing. But that didn't pan out, so it's not from a lack of trying and, you know, trying to get out there and working with people that are trying to fill the retail spaces. I think we were going pretty good for a while, successful in the retail and then, you know, the economy kind of did a little hiccup here, so we're still waiting to see what that looks like. People are still moving forward with development plans, so I'm hopeful that we'll start to see some more commercial being proposed along the way.
Is that it or you said you had a couple of questions?
Oh, I want to know who these people are and what brings them here, but, because we have new people.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna add that as well. So I guess we could probably do this under Director's Report.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not only introduce our new planning commissioners, but maybe a better, you know, fuller introduction to our new Assistant City Manager, so.
Please, I'll just let everyone take a turn. I always make staff do a little presentation and then I say, tell us something interesting about yourself as well, so maybe that could be something.
So again, Carolyn, five weeks here. I was working in the city of Burien for three and a half years prior to this as the Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Director and also served as interim city manager there for about half the year last year. Prior to that, I worked for the city of Redmond for 11 years in the Parks Department doing planning and cultural arts and was very involved in the Sound Transit redevelopment of downtown. Worked on infrastructure plans with Public Works, King County Metro and Sound Transit to figure out how we can all fit in the same public land downtown and meet a certain aesthetic. So that was really exciting work and have a background in environmental remediation, transportation and transit planning and environmental planning as well. And fun fact, I love mountain biking.
So Commissioner Thompson, I'm just so glad to finally have my orientation after being on the commission for a year. And I'm so glad to finally get my training email after being on the commission for a year. Looking forward to that and I, just a citizen of Mount Lake Terrace, been in Terrace since 1999. Noticed that I'm here and I'm not going anywhere and I decided it was time for me to get involved and so I raised my hand and got on the Planning Commission. I am very much learning and so I appreciate the good comments that I hear from Commissioner Betcher and from Chair Bratista and hoping to just be value-added and continue to learn and do good things for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. I would love it to be a more, more than a bedroom community. I want it to be a walkable, livable, I want to live here kind of community. I don't want everyone to go somewhere else to work or go somewhere else to. We do, like, you're right, have the groceries around the perimeter, but not in the center. So I just want to see what I can do to do my part. Have a fun fact? No, no, I'll just say something simple. I'm owner of two Sharpes with two very different personalities. One very standoffish and sticks to mommy's ankles and the other one will greet anybody under the sun. I was told once that Sharpes tend to be standoffish, like my female and Mel, who is not like that, I was told he was a Labrador in a Sharpay costume.
Hi, everybody. My name is Steve Lanis. I'm a new commissioner. This is my first meeting and I feel incredibly fortunate that I didn't have to wait a year. So thank you so much for getting here for my first. It was very helpful and informative. Why am I here? My wife and I bought our first house here about a year ago and then about two months after we moved in, we had our first child. So we got a 15-month-old son at home and that combination of things is what inspired me to similarly like, hey, I'm happy to help out. It's, you know, it's our first chosen community that we're going to raise a family in and if I can be helpful, I'd like to be helpful. And that was really the extent of it. So happy to be here, happy to work with all of you and try to make Mount Lake Terrace as great as it can be. My fun fact is going to be my, I have a new baby, so I already said that. August, I'll follow your lead. We have two dogs at home as well. We have a husky and a random, he's got like 25 breeds in him, so I don't know what you would even say is primary, but yeah, it's a busy house these days with a lot of mouths to feed, so that's, that's me.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jenna Stenson. I'm also brand new. This is my first Planning Commission meeting. Me and my husband bought our first home in Mount Lake Terrace in, I think it was November 2019 and then COVID happened. So we've had a lot of time to just walk our neighborhoods and really get comfortable here in the community. And very similar to Steve, I, you know, professionally was looking for other ways to kind of feel engaged and I'm like, wait, I should be looking in my own community and I should be looking at more how I can stand up as a resident and get involved. So I sent in my application and I'm really excited to be a new member here. Professionally, I was actually for many years a planner by trade, so very familiar with Planning Commission meetings. That's what my degree is in. Worked for King County, worked for the city of Woodinville. Now I actually work for the city of Seattle in the permitting department, but I do more kind of IT-related work. So I'm a product manager and I think a lot about how our digital services, especially in the age of COVID, are relevant. And, and of course equitable and making sure that people can access our government services wherever they're coming from. I feel like I'm just going to jump on the dog train because I also have two dogs at home. We have a lab mix and a kelpie mix. You'll probably see us walking in the neighborhood. We are out multiple times a day with them in our parks and on our streets here.
Skip me, we'll go. I'll go last.
Hi, I'm Isaac Harrison. I've lived in Mount Lake Terrace for about eight years. We also just bought our house in the middle of COVID in 2020, so planning roots here and it's fair to say, as far as my background, well, I've been a member of the Planning Commission for three years, I want to say, but I'm also a member of the Civil Services Commission with Deneen. Yes, about me, my background, well, we don't have dogs. We do have two cats, but yeah, so I'm the library manager for the Briar Library, just right next door. My background is primarily in libraries, but I actually also have a law degree and a Masters of Policy Study, so a little familiar with some, some of what happens. But yeah, I'm just here because I love the city, I love what it's becoming and I just want to be a part of it.
I'm Adam Betcher. I don't actually remember how long I've been on the Planning Commission. I think I started with you, Deneen, right? Okay, so about a year then. I've lived in Mount Lake Terrace since the very end of 2016, beginning of 2017 and pretty close by. The house I bought, maybe this is the interesting fact, was on the market at the same time as a different house that was slightly nicer. And as I walked home from my house, from the Transit Center on the first day, I met the person who bought the other house and we hung out a few times after that. I'm by trade, I guess, an architect, I don't know what I'd do anymore. I work for SDCI as a plans examiner and I do a few other things here and there. But before that, I was an acoustic consultant for 10 years and before that, I was a regular architect in Florida where I sort of grew up, but I'm not really from anywhere, but my family is from here, so I wound up moving back. We also have two cats and the other interesting fact is we have a lot of rabbits in the yard and they're always very entertained.
All right, I guess it's my turn, so just doing a little mental math here. So it looks like between all of you guys combined in terms of city residency, it's a nice diverse swath of everybody and all of you added up together kind of comes to how long I've been in the city, so. Honestly, I can't remember, sometime in 1979, so don't quote, you know, don't quote me what month that was. I've been on the Planning Commission, going into this next year will be my 20th year, so, which is a reminder because that means I'll probably have to submit my reapplication form. I'm good for this year, but I know, I know the, the middle of next year, it'll be the full 20, so I guess I'm entering my 20th year on the Planning Commission. I've been the chair for, it was before COVID. I don't know. We had a, before I became chair, our predecessor, who unfortunately she's passed away now, she was chair for a long time, like 17, yeah, that sounds, that sounds about right. She was chair, after, one meeting after I started, she took over as chair and was chair all the way until she left, so. So she was chair for quite a, quite a long time and set a great example of, you know, you know, how to run meetings, how, you know, how to be a leader as part of this, this body, you know, you know, make sure that everybody has a chance to being heard, but also knowing when to step in and, you know, sometimes putting it into a debate or, or, you know, or, or moving on. What about me? I too work for the city of Seattle. I did start out my career in parks, so it's fun to hear somebody from parks. Been a decade in parks, so I'm always, it's always nice to see someone else in parks. So I have, it's interesting, I have Parks background. I did a stint at City Light, so I've got a utilities background, which came in real handy when we were talking about undergrounding power. I pretty much had, got to take over that meeting and explain what everything meant. I did a long stint at the municipal court, so when we were talking about the jail and the court, so I know a lot about that. I'm an ESTOAT right now. My education is planning by trade. Fortunately, I went to a school that doesn't have a urban planning bachelor's degree in name only, so I can't say I have a planning degree, but I have a minor in urban planning, a minor in architecture, a minor in landscape architecture and a degree in urban geography. So, I mean, you add it all together, you go to any other school and that's, that's an urban planning degree, so. I do not have a dog. I don't have a dog. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a dog person. I did have a cat for a long time growing up, but yeah, no, no dog. Probably more of a pet rock. of a pet rock speed type of person these, these days, so. So that's a little bit about me, so, nice doing a little round robin, getting to know everybody, we've had a lot of turnover lately, so it's, it's nice to see new faces and get to know everybody. And I will say, yes, you are very fortunate to get this kind of orientation early on in your career. I mean, it was pretty much review for me, but it took years of, you know, being part of this body to, you know, kind of pick up all these things, so consider yourself lucky that you kinda got it all at once, and there'll be a quiz next week. All right, so staff, do you have anything, anything else? Sounds like your Director's Report was done.
I do not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can use myself, Kristy Osborne. I've been at the city about five and a half years. My background, professional planning-wise is over 30 years, I think it's, I'm on like 33 years. My background is primarily local government cities and counties, although I've done private consulting along the way as well. I have two dogs, I'll get that out of the way as well, that can be my fun fact. A lab puppy who's about 15 months old, about the same age as your son, that is slowly becoming bearable with obedience training amongst other things. And then we have a King Charles Cavalier who's about 10 years old, that's my baby. And so, yep, happy to be here at the city. We've been trying to do a lot of good things in kind of building our department and rebuilding how we do things, both development review-wise and long-range planning. We've had our share of ups and downs with COVID, and staffing has been a real challenge. Happy to report, within the last several months, we have some new planners on board, I actually have a planner who's on, was on his third day today, but a lot of younger, smart folks that are here, and so looking forward to the future and doing some good work long-range planning-wise, and I'm a big code person, you know, I think long-range planning absolutely sets the foundation for all that we do, but implementations where the rubber hits the road. So I love code, I love writing code, and so I know that sounds disgusting actually in a way, it's a sickness, but it's a good thing I do, I guess. But we're also, I think, trying to do a whole different series of things. To me, I always look at our community and what we hear from the community is they wanna be proud of Mountain Lake Terrace and the community that they live in, so I think about that all the time, and what we do on a day-to-day basis of trying to bring those things into the cities, the grocery store, the coffee shop, the things that people want here, and also to make it a place where people are proud of, that you come home and, like Dineen said, that, hey, I'm, I'm really proud that I live here, and I want people to feel that way, living in Mountain Lake Terrace, so.
All right, thank you. So it looks like next item on the agenda then is gonna be miscellaneous business by call-up Planning Commissioners, and so far, our new Planning Commissioners is basically just time if you've got anything, anything additional that wasn't on the agenda item, usually this is like reserved time, so if you know you have vacation coming up or you're gonna need an excused absence, this is usually the time to let us know, so, you know, we can go, you know, excuse it now, or, you know, it's on our radar that, you know, in three months, you're kinda rubbing it in our noses that you're gonna be off on some nice trip while we're slumming it away here, so. So anyway, we're at that point of the meeting now, so does anybody have any miscellaneous business? Vacations? Travel?
All my vacations do not interrupt the meetings. I do have a question, I was waiting for this part.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said something that made me trigger, we don't seem to have a vice chair, so do we just wait till, what do we do about that?
I was waiting for kind of a conversation to happen, but I have it sitting here on my notes that we need to put down on our agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, something like that has to be on the agenda and published, you know, within a certain period of time before the meeting happens, so it's not just something that we can, we can just randomly say, oh, yeah, let's have, no, that, something like that has to be on the agenda for us to do, so.
It'll be on your next agenda, along with photos.
Oh, photos. Thank you, that's what, that's what was on my mind.
Anybody else? I am not hearing or seeing anything, so with that, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. And thank you again to the public for coming in and speaking.
Record.
It's, it's nice to see a public in person for once.